Last board meeting of the calendar year, and I want to send you off with a real pair of gifts for the holiday season. I also want to give our colleagues here who have celebrated birthdays. We had last week two birthdays, one with trustee Mary Petlicoff and one with Chair Thorpe. So happy birthday to both of you and happy holidays to all those of you from Henry Ford College or studying at Henry Ford College. Before I give the first of my two gifts, which is a presentation about open educational resources, or OERs, I want to do one point of personal privilege. In this room, I think maybe five hours ago, we had a really wonderful ceremony where the lieutenant governor was here, the mayor of Dearborn was here, the senior vice president of Corwell Health was here, and five nursing students were here to celebrate what is a transformational historic agreement between Henry Ford College and Corwell Health that guarantees employment to nursing students who are willing to commit to Corwell Health. And as far as we can tell, no college or university in the state of Michigan is able to claim that they can give students that benefit. And frankly, this would not have happened if it weren't for the excellent work by many people, one of whom is Rhonda DeLonge, who put together a really great presentation today orchestrated what can only be described as a wedding with 15 different couples at the same time, and pulled it off with calm and cool. And she also was able to put Henry Ford College on the media landscape in multiple venues that some of you may have already seen, but will continue to come through. Another person that deserves a lot of credit is Amy Clark, who is the vice president of legal affairs and the general counsel at Henry Ford College. Getting to this agreement was not any small feat legally. And as I mentioned a time ago, that Corwell Health is the largest employer in the state of Michigan, and I'm quite positive they employ more than a few lawyers. But they were met with professionalism and equal aptitude by our large legal team of one lawyer and one paralegal. And Amy Clark deserves a great amount of credit for what is an agreement that includes a hiring guarantee. But those two are really the folks who are playing supporting roles because the true unsung hero and the MVP of this is my colleague and friend, Vice President Michael Nealan, who years ago I said, you know, we really need to get to a place where this college can promise employment for its students, promise and guarantee a great job as a result of coming to Henry Ford College. And I knew at that time he completely agreed with me, but I also saw in his eyes he thought that I was pretty crazy. And despite his eyes, his feet, and his heart, and his hands stood with me and continued to go to employer after employer after employer. And Michael, I know many times you were wondering, will we ever make it? And I can tell you without a doubt, we would never, ever have made it, trustees, if it weren't for nights and weekends and hours upon hours of Dr. Nealan trying to figure out a way to craft the right agreement whereby students would get what I said you all wanted, trustees, was a separate, a unique, a historic agreement where Henry Ford College could say to its students, we can give you something that no one else can give you. And Michael, it really just was as a result of your hard work. And I know that, I see it, I want everyone else to see it, and I want anyone who ever benefits from this, and I'll keep saying it until the breath is out of my lungs, that Dr. Michael Nealan is the reason why we made this happen. So I want you to know how indebted I am unto you, and I rarely do this, but I will say on behalf of this entire board that your work was exemplary, and we greatly appreciate it. Which is a good way to segue to what I want you to talk about next, another project that is deeply important to you, and that is reducing the cost of attendance and success at Henry Ford College through, hopefully, eliminating the cost of textbooks. So I've asked trustees, I've asked Dr. Nealan to bring some of his colleagues to talk about OERs, and I would ask that you give him and his colleagues an opportunity to make his presentation, and then if you have any questions, he'll be ready. So this is the first gift, and then the second gift is a student, a former student who I want to introduce you to and brag about. So, Dr. Nealan, are you prepared to give the first gift?
There are. I was going to say, three wise men, but you'll have to do with me and two wise men, one of whom's a woman. You just saw that my day job was pretty much being a roadie for the music students. Anyways, thank you, President Cavallone, I really appreciate that, and it was just a blessing to be able to work with so many people to get that done. But this also is a tremendous labor of love and very, very essential work. In fact, this is also with an associate's degree and set on a career and further education in biochemistry, right? Yes, okay, so it doesn't do things the easy way. Really, very quickly, open educational resources are high-quality, oftentimes free, or at least low-cost, openly licensed tools that faculty can make available to students in lieu of expensive textbooks and other course materials. They're owned publicly by all scholars, all teachers, and all students on a global level. And so they're very customizable in the sense that faculty members can pick and choose and draw and adapt and tailor these tools to meet the precise needs of Henry Ford College students studying any one of the more than 1,000 courses that we teach at school. They can reduce, if not eliminate, textbook costs to students, they provide equitable access. In other words, students don't have to worry about finding the money to pay for a textbook that in many cases can cost more than the tuition is to actually take the course. In so doing, they can access their course materials anywhere, anytime that they wish, in many cases even before the class starts. Quicker path to degree completion because, as you'll hear, students oftentimes use those savings proactively to advance themselves by taking more credits and therefore getting to the finish line faster. And that customization that are in the hands of our faculty allows flexibility, allows creativity, critical thinking, and the open exchange of ideas on a national and global scale with other people who are also teaching that subject matter. Really quickly then, what have we been able to do in a short period of time? In earnest, our first attempt at adopting and adapting OERs at Henry Ford College started with a challenge that we put out there, and we put some money behind it. We had a grant for faculty who were willing to experiment and engage in this work. That was academic year 2021. We had 49 sections at the college at that point that stepped forward and said that they would do it. Fast forward all the way to '22, '23, not a long period of time, and yet, we now had a year that had 221 sections adopting that. It's a 450% increase, and we expect going into this academic year, the fall semester having already been completed, that we will top over 250 sections adopting OERs. In terms of the number of students directly benefiting from this work, our first step out, 3,700 students. The past year that we just completed, 11,000 students, and we're on course to push that probably north of 12,500 students, taking seats that are in part paid for by the fact that they don't have to pay for expensive textbooks. What does that mean for students? In that first year, we were stunned that we were able to put almost $375,000 back into the pockets of our students. So imagine the jaw-dropping reaction we had when we crunched our numbers last year and realized that we'd already pushed beyond the million-dollar savings mark just for the year '22, '23 alone, and we believe we'll be pushing much closer to $1.3 million saved to Henry Ford College students this year. Spoiler, you're going to hear in a few slides, that we think we can actually double that. I'm going to ask Dr. Bailey to step in here and give you an idea of what this cost savings means to students, what they have to resort to when this is not available and in place for them, and to take something of a look during the next two slides at what we think we could do that would really get us a 112% increase, just like that, in five courses. Christina?
All right. So you can see that the students spent in the college bookstore, $3 million, $3.5 million in the '22, '23 academic year. And at the same time, with OERs, we save $1,100,000 to students. If it wasn't for these OER savings, our students would have spent $4.5 million in the '22, '23 school year. So in a study conducted by the state of Florida, that it is a service for students, that serves all, it's a virtual campus that serves all four colleges and universities in Florida, they did a study on OERs, and they studied how the students cope when they don't have to, or when they have to buy a textbook. 64% of the students do not purchase the required textbook. 42%, 43% almost take fewer courses because that's all that they can afford. 40% do not register for a specific course because they know that they have a very expensive textbook. 36% end up poor grade because they could not afford that textbook. And many of those students, 22, 23%, end up dropping the course. And you know what happens when the students drop the course, right? There goes our success, our retention, our graduation rate. So this has severe implications for our students. And you can see 25% of the students report needing to work extra hours in order to afford these textbooks. 19% decide which classes to take based on the price of the textbook. 17% skip buying access codes, and you know, many of our courses now have this access code that allows them to access the ebook. And 11% report they skip meals due to the cost of course fees, materials, and textbooks. So very, very important work, OER. And I have to say, when I came to HFC a few years ago, one of the first things that my boss charged me to do is, you must explore OER, and he sent me to MCO to learn all about it. And that, what if, what if five of our highest enrolled courses, one, just two for one school and one for each one of those schools, if they will use OER in all of the sections? What those savings would be in one academic year for our students with just those five courses? And that will be $1.5 million if five of those courses, all sections, will engage in adapting and adopting OER by the instructors. So those five courses alone will increase 112%.
... computer out loud. So, you know, folks who otherwise might be visually impaired or hearing impaired, they have access to the material that's being shared in all those media.
Okay, and one last question, which you might have.
We have a resource for our students in Muro, and the LMS is known Blackboard Ally, and that is for everything that has to do with accessibility. And one of the features is that you can download all of these OER as an audio file, or you can download it as Braille, and you can even print it as Braille.
Okay, so everything we're using is adaptable, good. I was just kind of curious because you said it came from a variety of.
Well, Christina's mentioning that we've invested in a software interface that takes whatever faculty bring, and it can spit it out in alternative modes of communication.
Yeah. Okay, so my final question would be then, so what do you think right now, and maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention, is holding back the other faculty member from moving forward with using this system? What are the obstacles?
One of the great temptress in staying with a publisher's product is not really the textbook, it's all the ancillary materials that, for example, makes the homework assignment and passes it out to the students, receives it when it comes in and grades it for you, creates the tests, students take them online, grades it for it. In other words, publishers have gotten very, very sophisticated in what they can do to take those mechanic pieces of managing a course or a class and do it for faculty members. And that's very, very appealing. But when it comes down to it, I don't know a faculty member that wouldn't agree with the statement that the students did not take this course to read the book that you asked them to buy, they came for a learning experience. You are the hero that they are hoping takes them on this journey. And frankly, the student and the world are the real textbooks, because it's always about self-discovery and that ability to understand the world that you're trying to navigate in this thing we call life.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Ali, thank you, Christina.
Ali, good luck with finals.
And we'll see you in the spring.
I have one more housekeeping matter, and then I want to introduce a very special guest. I should have done this in the top, but I do want to tell you all that the SSA has had its election and it has elected, re-elected the president, and President Morris, if you would stand, President Joni Morner has been re-elected. As the president of SSA, and she also is a big Lions fan like me, and she's wearing Hawks today because yesterday was kind of hard. But I'm sure she's going to be showing us all pictures of what she has now. I was talking about something else, there's a new grandbaby in President Morris's life, so I want to say congratulations to you on that. So, folks, the second gift of today's holiday board, board of trustees, is giving you a chance to hear from and meet one of our most famous former students. And that is a young man who I'm going to ask to talk to you in a minute, but I want to say a few words about him before I invite him to the podium. This is who I have just really enjoyed getting to know today, Emmanuel Orozco Castellanos. And Emmanuel, you may have seen, was recently awarded a Rhodes Scholarship. And his life story and his journey are fascinating, and he's going to share a few bits about that. But a bit about the Rhodes Scholarship for those of you who applied for the Rhodes Scholarship and didn't make it, or if you just didn't really think you could make it and didn't apply, which is what I did, I'd never applied, never thought I could, but I think maybe even Emmanuel will be talking a little bit about that. It is one of the world's oldest scholarships, it was founded in 1902. It is an extraordinarily competitive and prestigious scholarship. It asks for, quote, "applicants with great ambition for social impact and an uncommon ability to work with others to achieve your goals." You should also know that only 32 people in the United States are awarded this scholarship each year. You have to earn several folks from your university that support you in applying for this, and if you win this, you go on to a graduate program at Oxford University in England. You should also know that the scholarship itself gives that opportunity cost-free, and then that includes travel and study and expenses, and very likely exceeds $75,000 of value. It's no slouch to get in, we've had former President Bill Clinton and George Stephanopoulos as some Americans who you may know. Only 31 people from the University of Michigan have been awarded this, and the 31st one is Emmanuel, who came to us from Mexico and attended high school in southeast Michigan, and then believed that he had to follow what his mother told him he had to do, which is to get a college degree, and he wanted to go to the University of Michigan. And he was teaching himself English, he was working, and trying to find a way to get into the University of Michigan. And when he was told he wasn't quite ready, he came to Henry Ford College for a program in our honors program that would give him an opportunity to transfer to University of Michigan. I could tell you a lot more about that, but I do want to give you a chance to hear from him. And what we'll do, trustees, is let Emmanuel talk with you a bit. I've asked him to talk about his experience in Henry Ford College particularly. I just want to tell you that this is the life-changing work that you're leading here at the college, the kind of person who immigrates from another country, from meager means, to achieve access to University of Michigan through Henry Ford College, and then getting an extraordinarily wonderful opportunity as a Rhodes Scholar. After he says a few comments, I'll invite any of you to ask him any questions, and then what I would like to do is present Emmanuel with a token of our appreciation and take a photograph of me handing it to him, and then all of us will come to the front of the dais here and take a picture with the emblem behind us, because this is, I have to say, every single one of our students is important to us, we're proud of every single one of them, but not every single one of them is one of the Rhodes Scholars for this year. So please join me in welcoming, and Emmanuel, please feel free to join us at the podium. Please feel free to join me in welcoming Emmanuel.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really pleased and proud to be back, this feels like home. And I transferred to Michigan, to the University of Michigan, not that long ago. Thank you to the president and the board members for giving me this opportunity to express my gratitude. And I want to show you that I'm wearing my Henry Ford alumni pin. It was a gift from a good friend, and I'm wearing it not only with pride, but also with gratitude. And this story is about gratitude. And I want to start with the people who taught me what I know about gratitude, my parents and my family, my sisters who are here with me. My parents couldn't be here, but they're here supporting me, and I'm really grateful for that. But I want to tell you that my mom left school when she was in third grade in Mexico, and my dad finished elementary school but didn't have the opportunity to continue. And it was because they didn't have the opportunity that they valued education so much. And they actually sent my older brother to Wisconsin to complete his high school degree, and he was the first in our family to graduate from college. And I had that great example for me. My sisters do, we grew up in Mexico and moved to the United States six years ago in 2017, and my sister Lou, she's my twin sister, we were 18 at the time. And being an adult and having to navigate that immigrant journey was incredibly challenging. I went to River Rouge High School where I was trying to learn English and learn about the US education system, but unfortunately I didn't have enough time, enough information. And to me, it felt like all the doors I had available closed. But for, you know, I think it was fate, it was the universe, it was God, whatever you believe in, that I came across this announcement about the transfer bridges to the humanities on Henry Ford College's website. And I actually decided that my dream of attending the University of Michigan and fulfilling my mom's dream was not out of the question. And Henry Ford offered to me that second opportunity that I really needed and wanted. And the first person I met at Henry Ford was Dr. Michael Deere, and he, his passing is a great loss for this community, and I know it firsthand. When he interviewed me for admission into the honors program, he received me with a great smile, and I was nervous, it was my first interview in English. And I remember that after the interview was over, he smiled and said, congratulations, you're welcome, you're part of the honors program now. He offered me financial assistance, and I remember walking back to my car and looking up at the American flag and thinking, a stranger decided to give me this second opportunity that I needed so much, and I didn't even ask for it. And I think this is a story of gratitude, because one thing about gratitude is that gratitude multiplies. And he made an investment in my education. And when we think about education and the public good that it is, and when we think about supporting immigrants and refugees, oftentimes it is talked about as an expense, but I'm here to tell you that it is an investment. I have been allowed to give back to the community because I had this opportunity and because of the generosity that I have received myself. And I want to tell you just a little bit about my time as a Henry Ford College student. I had the great honor to have incredible professors, including Pedro San Antonio, who taught the first English writing class that I took here. And in his class, I learned about marginalized voices, and I found my own voice in the journey. And I also want to acknowledge the incredible work of Professor Angela Atikanavala, who's sitting back there. For one of her courses, we read Isabel Wilkerson's book on the Great Migration, The Worth of Other Suns. And the assignment was that we were asked to write about our migration stories. I sat down with my mom and discovered that my grandparents were Brazos. They came to the United States as seasonal workers and helped connect the Midwest to the American West, to the West Coast. Oh, I just don't want to go over time. But to me, writing that story and the fact that it was welcomed in the classroom and that I could learn from my ancestors and learn that migration had been part of my story for multiple generations was so empowering that I took that inspiration and took it in my future endeavors at the University of Michigan. One of the other things I got to do here because of Professor Angela was that I started volunteering at Freedom House Detroit, translating for refugees, and I actually minored in translation at the university. And this, again, is a story about investment, and the reason why so many other immigrants make such great contributions to society, and this is actually backed by social science, is because we know how far generosity can go. And so I'm here today to express my gratitude and to encourage you to be generous and to continue to be generous. As one of the other presenters said, equity is one of the core missions of Henry Ford College and public institutions. And if my story doesn't illustrate that, I know, I don't know what other story could, because this is about increasing access, and it gave me access, and the career that I'm going to pursue giving back and helping other people was only possible because of the generosity of so many people that work at this institution. Thank you so much, and go Hawks.
Don't go anywhere yet. Stay there, stay there. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to have Emmanuel answer any questions from your colleagues. Trustee Watts?
I was going to wait to go last. So there is so much that you just unpacked it, in your, that you presented in your story that resonates. My parents came from overseas where education was going to be number one, but they don't have normal education themselves. So the idea that you're going to go to college was never a question, it was going to be a given. But through their stories of doing interviews to find out what the previous generations have done in my family, so thank you for sharing that. Number two, I see that your story has resonated with one of your former professors in the back. So I just wanted to say thank you because you're not seeing, but when you were speaking as a former teacher, you don't know the impact that you have on your students until times like this. So I wanted to say thank you for sharing that as well. Now, number three, what are you going to do? I mean, like, we know where you've come from, but like, I mean, what are you doing at U of M as a former alum of Blue? But what are you planning on doing there, and then how does that propel you to Oxford, and then what after there? I feel like there's three stages here.
Yeah, so I'm currently, I've been working as a research assistant for about a year at the Department of Comparative Literature at the University of Michigan, and I'm curating a research project on muralism in southwest Detroit, what it means to the Mexican community. And it'll be, it's, we're going to have a launching event in April at West State University, so we're very excited about that. And I'm also starting a new role as a paralegal at the Michigan Immigrant Rights Center in January, so I'm going to be doing that between now and October when I start my master's degree in forced migration at Oxford. Yeah, and I hope to work for the UN High Commissioner for Refugees or global NGOs advocating for the rights of migrants and displaced people.
Well, I will say, please keep us posted, and when those events do happen, please share it with the president. And when those events do happen, please share it with the president, because I would like to come in and attend to support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mosip.
Thank you, President Thorpe. Emmanuel, from a fellow immigrant, I'm very proud of you and your accomplishments, and you've made us all proud. And the kudos that you gave to your professors just tell us how wonderful this institution is. And I, you said you went to River Rouge for high school?
Yes.
So if you would go there, and I'm sure that you're still having a lot of connections to that area, we need students from that area to come to Henry Ford College. So I would hope that you would put in the word, as I believe you would, since you are so proud of your time here, and we need more of students like you to attend this institution. So thank you for coming out today as well.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I worked as a paraprofessional for, when I was a student here at Egress High School, which is the public high school where I live, and I, that's exactly what I did. I told every single one of the students in the DSL program, "Go to a community college, forget about the four-year university degree." And I mean, it's a great, it's just such a great option, and I told them about how it made my transition so much easier, especially for multilingual students who are still, you know, trying to improve their English skills. Yeah, thank you.
And Trustee Pelishkov?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate you as well, and I thought you deserve the applause for the hard work you put in and the vision that you had and the ability to pursue it, even though you thought you had some roadblocks in the way. So I really applaud you on that journey. The one thing I can say is that institutions like ours, community colleges especially, that's what we were created for. That's exactly, you are the purpose for us in our existence, is to provide those opportunities and that vision that you thought wasn't going to be within your reach. And I'm so happy that we were able to provide that for you, and I appreciate the fact that you took advantage of it, and I hope and wish for you all the best of your coming years and pursuing your dreams. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, sorry, go ahead.
Appreciate you. I would just start with wow from the whole presentation that you gave. You serve as an ambassador for many groups, too many groups, and never forget that. And I am very happy that you are an ambassador for our institution going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Emmanuel, I want to share just two little bits of information, and then I didn't ask my colleague Angela if she would, but I'm going to ask her to consider in a minute coming up and handing this plaque with me to you. And you don't have to, there's going to be photographs, but I'm going to give you about 30 seconds to decide whether you want to come up, Angela, because I'm going to talk for a minute. Trustees, Emmanuel and I have spent a little bit of time this afternoon together, and I want to share a few things with you that are remarkable about him, and I want to tell you why I think you're remarkable. Emmanuel shared that when he came to Henry Ford College, he was suffering from, and these are my words, not him, but a little bit of intimidation, maybe even a little bit of imposter syndrome, and that it was hard. It was hard to be here, learning English, climbing the mountain that is a potential to be a college student. And that, we talked with his sisters, we found out that it was intimidating for his twin sister also, and he said, you know, "That first day I came home and I cried, and I was scared. And then I talked with him more and more, and I thought that, you know, there was just, like every other person, times of doubt and concern and fear." And two things about that struck me, Emmanuel. Number one, I watched the way your sisters looked at you, and they just so adore and impressed by your courage. And courage is not having the lack of fear. Of course, you know, courage is dealing with fear and overcoming it to persevere. And the change that I can see you've had on the people most close to you is remarkable, but it's not just them. People like me look at you and are inspired and find courage. And I can tell you, trustees, there's just a strange thing of fate that Emmanuel came to this college in the end of the summer of 2018, and he was feeling kind of intimidated and excited by the prospect. And he and I were sitting in the same place at Henry Ford College. And I said to him today, "Tell me about when you got here." And he said, "Well, yeah, I was doing this, and I was doing this, and then I got, started getting involved, and I had this event where I was supposed to help people check in at something where you were going to become the president." And I think it was called Investiture or something like that. I said, "Please tell me you didn't have to sit through the speech." But it just resonated with me that you and I came to Henry Ford College, and it just says, it makes me feel really, really wonderful, like it does your instructor, who now has to decide whether she wants to come up or not. But it makes us feel like our work matters. So if, I agree with you. Generosity, what you're doing for us makes us feel, and you're being generous to us to let us have a part of your journey. All right, Angela, you coming up with me?
Yeah.
Okay. So Emmanuel, why don't you come up here? We're going to take a picture. I'm going to let Angela hand it to you. Read it for her, and go up and hand it to her, and we'll take a picture. So this says, "Henry Ford College warmly congratulates and honors Emmanuel Orozco Castellanos on being selected a 2024 Rhodes Scholar. We are very proud of you!" Exclamation point. Trustees, I appreciate you giving me the time to give you those two holiday gifts, and that is my report.
Any questions for President Cavallona before we move to our next item?
How do we tap this next year?
Emmanuel, one is your sister applying for a Rhodes Scholarship.
All right, next, oh, trustee Mosip.
Yes. Last meeting, we did vote on the millish proposal, and I kind of had a little bit of commentary about letting the voters know why we have four mills on the ballot, and I wanted to ask the president, what are we doing as far as the PR is putting information about the millish similar to what the P-12 district is doing to their millish proposal as well?
Yes, thank you, trustee Mosip. The law only allows employees of this institution to give what is described as information. I'm sure you're aware, I think I've given the board memorandum on the difference between information and advocacy. The information campaign is underway, and that is being headed by Rhonda DeLonge. And I'm happy to give a report to the board on how that's going to proceed. The advocacy campaign is something that college employees cannot work on during their time on the clock, so to speak, for the college, which includes me. And so I think if you're interested in the advocacy campaign, I will take, I will take time off of my duties as president and brief any trustee about how to get information about that.
No, I'm talking about just informational campaigns, not...
Yeah, the information campaign's in the formation process right now, and I can tell you that very soon that campaign will begin, and it'll include a website, written information, and then myself going to community groups to discuss the information associated with it. And my hope is, in the next couple of weeks, to give you all a formal report as to what the information campaign will entail. And of course, if the trustees have interest or feedback or want to take part in that, they'll be welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for President Cavallona? Next item, please.
Next item, discussion item, conflict of interest policy.
Got yours on it.
Candidly, I don't remember many of the details. So if Mrs. Clark can come up with, I guess, have any questions.
So I can fill in a bit here. The conflict of interest policy was brought to the Policy Committee over the last several months. It was, I believe, and Ms. Clark, just shake your head no if what I'm about to say is inaccurate, but I believe it is, that policy, proposed policy, was discussed at the Policy Committee both in September and, I believe, last month at the Policy Committee. It is, the draft has been circulated to, am I accurate there, Ms. Clark?
Yes, we are, got both, yes.
Yeah, it was, it was discussed and presented first to the board in September, and then again in October.
At the Policy Committee or here?
Here, I mailed it to...
Okay.
Yeah, so we were done with the policy review, Policy Committee was done in February, but September.
September, yeah. So, but it has not been on your agenda, I don't believe, here as a discussion item. So this is essentially the first reading of that policy that has been in your inbox for a little longer than usual. But Ms. Clark, or I, or the chair of the Policy Committee are happy to answer any questions. It's a discussion item only at this meeting.
Since everyone's had information on this, is there any questions or discussion that the trustees have? This would be an action item then in January.
All right, now is the time, if you have questions, otherwise they will move forward.
Anything that you would mention from it, or, all right, next item?
Next item, action items, citizen participation. We have one blue card, Mr. Eric Reeder, representing local 1650, would like to come to address the board about OERs.
Hello, members of the board and chair and President Cavallona. I saw some of you earlier today. I appreciated the presentation by Doctors Nealon and Bailey and our student on OERs. We in political science, my discipline, have been kind of, for years, look, I mean, lamenting the costs of textbooks in our own discipline, which don't nearly match what they are in, like, the sciences and other areas. And about a dozen years ago, Dr. Perry was kind of leading an effort in political science to write a book. We were going to write a book and actually offer it, it was, we didn't even know the concept of OER at the time, but kind of life got in the way, and we never kind of went as far as we wanted to go with that. I know that Dr. Perry does use an OER in his intro to American Government class, but, so I, and the number of 1650 members as well as AFO members have been very much involved in these discussions that Dr. Nealon and Dr. Bailey and others have led. I know some of our librarians have been involved in those discussions, because they're very much aware of the costs of books. The, one of the limitations I've faced in my own area, and I teach American Government, we all, all of us in political science teach American Government, I also teach state and local government, and there's a, there aren't near, there are a lot of options for the American Government book, because the American Government is offered at almost every university and college in the country. State and local is a much more limited in terms of textbooks and so forth. So one of the limitations sometimes with OERs is that you are kind of, there isn't a lot there for some areas, and others, there's a lot there. So, and I've seen that, I've seen the OER options improve in the political science area and the intro area. When I was looking at it a few years ago, I wasn't thrilled with the option, I think it's gotten a lot better. So, but the main thing, I guess, from the faculty side is that, and I think Dr. Nealon referenced this, that we, each department has, schools and departments sometimes have different policies. For the larger sections of, say, enter to American Government, we might offer just one book for everyone to use, whereas another is kind of more, I don't want to say niche courses, but other courses, you might have the instructor making the decision. I think that's very important, that the instructor, based on their pedagogy, based on their curricular understanding, is able to make a decision that makes the most sense. And certainly, as we move forward, lowering the cost of books and maybe at some point getting to zero is important. But it is, there are a lot of factors that faculty do consider when they're looking at books. We've always considered cost as one of our primary things, but we also want a quality product to, for our courses, so the students are getting the best that they can get. So I applaud the work we've been doing on that, and I think we're, that we have, we can continue to grow that way. There are still some limitations in that area, and we just always want to be conscious of that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Reeder. Next item?
Recommended action, move to approve action items one through nine as recommended in this agenda.
So move support?
I'm going to update that, it's actually one through seven.
I had my head down and did not really pick whose voices...
I moved it, and trustee McDonald's...
All right, motion by trustee Mosip, supported by trustee McDonald. Any questions on any of the action items? Trustee McDonald?
I don't want anything pulled, but I do have a question on number one. And as I was reading about it, it said that the bid specifications require that the supplier have a local office for hardware issues and that kind of thing. Well, none of the bids, the supplier didn't have a local office. So I was just wondering, how problematic is that? And what are the options, since we don't have that, if we run into issues?
Mr. Steiner, or Mr. Satkowski, or Mr. Zitnick, do any of you three have an answer on the tip of your tongue?
Will I go first and joke, come up and correct all my mistakes?
Mr. Steiner walks like a man who's answering a tough question but retiring at the end of January. So please go easy on him.
So, well, we'll see what happens. Well, we have required that provision in the large purchase of computer systems for quite some time, because when we run into possibly manufacturer defects, a bad motherboard or other things like that, it's a lot easier for our IT staff to deal with a local, not even a local company, but at least a company that has a resource in the local area where we can get delivery like next day in order to get these computers up and running back in the classrooms. So that's been one of our standard criteria for the large classroom orders for quite a few years. This particular bid was posted on BidNet, the system that the state of Michigan uses, part of the Mitten Network. And when it goes on the online bidding system, we get a lot of, I'll call them stray cats, you know, that come flooding in, you know, they look on their website, they get a ping on their desktop, and they throw a number in, and they don't bother reading the specifications a lot. So, you know, all these bidders who are disqualified, you know, are those kinds of companies that, you know, could be from coast to coast. And without that local support, it really causes a lot of problems for our IT and technical staff when, you know, chances are, there's going to be a computer here and there that is going to go down, and they need to get, you know, the replacement part. So that's why it's a requirement, and what, and then, you know, we check to verify that, you know, they've got the listing on the bid spec asking for their local office, and we'll, you know, sometimes check out to make sure that that's a legitimate, you know, address.
Okay. But without any of them having, you don't see any problem with that, just if there's an issue, it might take a little longer to get fixed, or...
It...
Because I know there's nothing that you can do if none of the bidders except rebid it, but you don't always want to do that.
Right.
It's problematic in itself.
Yes. And...
And I'm sorry for throwing you on the spot, it just...
Yeah, no, well, you know, the majority of the companies that did respond are companies that we've got a history with. There are some new companies here, but, you know, they also have the local, you know, the local support. And the company that won the bid, CDWG, is a firm that we've used many times. Excellent quality, they've got the local support, they've got access to multiple, I think at least five different group purchasing contracts, and so they'll look to find which one gives us the best rates. And, you know, they give us the best cost that met all of our specifications.
Now, you call them stray cats, but I was pleased to see all the bids, because sometimes we only see one or two, and there was many there, so.
Right.
But, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any additional questions on any of the action items? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item, acknowledgements of correspondence.
I don't recall any correspondence in the last month for the college. I don't recall any correspondence in the last month for the college. Next?
Board committee reports. The Policy Committee met earlier today. We reviewed three policies. One was policy 2550, titled payroll authorization. That was something that was just needing to be reviewed and reformatted, so none of the verbiage was changed. The next one was policy 2750, that title is payroll deductions. There were some verbiage that needed to be added to that, that included, you know, the word Medicare, perhaps not using US saving bonds, some things that were a little antiquated that may no longer be something that is standard. And the last time that that was revised was in 1999. And the last policy that we discussed was policy 2200, Auxiliary Reserve Fund. That has some verbiage that was updated as well. We'll still have to get, I think there was one discussion about a word here or there that needed to get changed after all of the changes were made, but just updating that as well, and that was last revised in 1996. And so those were the three that were brought up. And then we also discussed the maternity policy that was put in place that'll need additional, at least one other committee meeting to look over as well. And I believe that was it.
Any other committee reports? I don't believe there were.
I think if I'm not mistaken, the maternity policy wasn't put in place, but it is, we're going to set one up that is specifically for maternity.
It is, it'll be a standalone.
Yeah, it'll be a standalone, so.
It'll be a standalone as opposed to where it was before.
So Amy's going to be working on the language for that. Yeah, it'll be a new policy, specific to maternity. So, and real quick too, I just want to thank Amy for all of her work, because we've been going through all of these, and it's a lot of work, and I know she's put in multiple hours, probably spent a lot of weekends working on this too, so. So thank you. And the committee, I just also have to say, this has been the most productive committee I've been on in a long time. Thank you, Chair Watts, for your work on chairing it. And we've just had some really, really meaningful, good discussions, so.
Yes, and we also discussed that moving forward, it would be, the standing time for the committee would be every month, to be able to get through all of these policies and just to make sure that going forward, it would be a monthly thing. So to expect if you wanted to be on policy for the college and/or the school board, the college will be meeting every single month at six o'clock the day of school board, our college meetings.
Okay. Next item?
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
President Cavalluna, I would say that what trustee Mosip had brought up earlier on the informational campaign regarding the millage, anything additional that we'd want to see? Trustee Petlicov?
Well, just to piggyback on that, when you have something ready, I've already sent what the P-12 had for their millage renewal, they had, have some written verbiage that I've shared with my membership groups through my own personal account. So if you can send us something that is formal enough but informational enough that I, that can be, any of us can share with any other people that we know who want information outside of the normal channels, that it would be useful to have that in electronic form. I appreciate it.
Yes, the sooner the better, because I'm going to say that absentee balance would be out before we meet again for the college, right around that, about that time, middle of January?
Do you remember the answer to that?
January 18th.
January 18th, so probably...
Right about that.
Perfect, okay. Any additional requests for information or agenda items? Next item?
Final board member commentary.
Nothing, except I just...
Did you have your hand up, or was it like, I don't know?
No, it was a hand up. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and enjoy the time, the downtime with your families, and cherish that, it's important.
Trustee Petlicov, did you have an item?
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate the two gifts tonight. They were extremely special. I enjoyed them.
Yeah, and I would echo in terms of, besides happy holidays to everybody, good luck on finals, both for staff and students. We know this will be a fun week, as it always is. Before our board meets again, or when our board meets again, we will be in different roles as trustees. Everyone is aware that we do elections of officers at our first January meeting, that will be at the P-12 meeting. So when we meet again, we will probably all be sitting in different seats. So for this year...
Not me.
Well, no, you, you two stay. On behalf of the board, for all the work that you've done in 2023, thank you.
Just a quick reminder to anyone, both of our next meetings on the P-12 side and the college side will be on the Tuesday, not the Monday.
Yes.
So just a reminder.
Yes. And again, to all the trustees, if you are interested in serving in any of the leadership roles, make sure you're talking to the other trustees in one-on-one settings and letting people know what you are interested in and what you feel your qualifications are. Next item?
Future meeting dates, Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, P-12 Finance Committee meeting, 5:30 at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, P-12 Organizational Meeting, 6:15 at the Administrative Service Center, the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, P-12 Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.